I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Delton?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Uh, citizen comments? Looks like no one. Uh, we have no public hearings, we have reading and approval of minutes from our August ninth regular meeting.
I will move approval of the regular minutes from the August nine meeting. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We have the same condensed version of those minutes.
I will move approval of the condensed version minutes from August ninth.
I will second that, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We have the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, gambling reports from the Eagles and the Legion, uh, application, for example, permit from someplace safe, uh, library board minutes and added this afternoon, final pay estimate number two for Riley Brothers Construction. I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion or question on any of the items?
Uh, just on the library board minutes, I was reading through that, are they still working shorthanded or did they hire somebody? I know the minutes, I think, were a little dated, but...
I believe they are still shorthanded, a little bit.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
Okay.
They hired...
I think they hired somebody, yeah.
They did hire.
They did.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the initial go around, they didn't find anybody and then they re-advertised and then I think they found somebody.
Yeah, okay. I know, I remember that, that she, she had talked about that, that she didn't get any out of the first go around. Um, good, any other, uh, comments or questions on any of the items?
Uh, are you an officer again on the Legion? I see your name on the, uh...
I am not an officer of the Legion, they, uh...
They need to...
Yeah. They need to fix that, but they haven't. Um, yeah, unfortunately, my name is on that, it is, it should be crossed off, please ignore it, it isn't signed either. Um, so I guess we could choose to send it back to them or we could choose to just accept it as it's probably okay.
I'm not sure what protocol would be on that if it's not signed, I don't know. What do you guys think?
I guess I don't have a major issue with it, just that at one time we were backed up and they hadn't, I can't remember if it was Legion or if it was Eagles, did not get our, our monthly reports to us and just
Yep.
that it needs to be done, it's just some housekeeping for them, so...
Yep, guess maybe a quick note to whoever turns this in, trying to, um, make sure it's signed and the names are correct. I don't know who turns it in.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, we, we definitely can do that. Cause they should, they should have their items.
Any other comments or concerns, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have petitions, requests and communications, tourism marketing request policy. This is just a start, right? Or is this a final?
It's just a start, for the most part.
It's just a start.
Yeah, we still gotta finalize some things about the format.
Good, good. It looked like that, there was a, a few little tweaks that needed to be added, but this is a definitely good start that I see.
Yep, it's, it's just, there's a few, a few little bugs we gotta kinda work out on it yet, but for the most part, it's, yeah, you're right, it's...
I have a question about, like, how do you know if the event is gonna draw tourists from outside Stevens County? I mean, what, what is, or is this just gonna be any event that appears like anyb... Cause you really have no idea.
Well, you kinda, you, 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 it kinda depends on the event and, you know, you really just need to, like, for example, the recent art festival that we, uh, we approved to support, um, you know, they indicated what their goal was and they, they sorta know where their customers are and where their people are gonna be coming from. So, we kinda take all of that into consideration when we, you know, when we approve these things or consider, uh, the event, if it's worthy, you know, it kinda has to do with the intent that they will indicate on this form, you know, intended audience is on there. So, you know, that's, that's where we'll have to dig into it a little bit and ask some more probably, you know, identifying questions on just what kind of a market and what kind of an audience are they actually looking to attract? So...
And the next line also, Kevin, anticipated regional drop, approximate distance, you know, so that's, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna put what they expect, um, whoever's applying.
And these will be all outlined when they apply for, and they're applying for just to get it?
Marketing support.
So, okay.
Yeah, and so then, you know, it's, it's a tool for the board to look at what the request is, cause the marketing support is gonna be marketing outside of this area, it's not gonna be marketing in the local area. And so then, if there's not a clear understanding that you're targeting people from the outside area to come in here, there's not gonna be probably a decision to spend money to market out there for, and it, and the, the, kinda the wild card, the unknown is what all, all these events are, you know, what do they look like? But it, it does set up the ability for somebody to, to ask for help supporting their, their project.
Yep.
And the tourism, um, money doesn't generally go to organizations, it goes to help promote?
Goes to the marketing, you know, and that was actually, one of the things that happened was, uh, they, there, there's a subcommittee that looked at the policy issue of it and one of the members reached out to the state attorney general's office and got a, a lot of information from the attorney general's office on what you can use this money for. And it's not to be used for locals, it's not to be given away, it's, it's, it's for promoting tourism is what it's really meant to do. And...
And that's really your, that's been your guidance really laying all along.
And there's some good examples of things you can do and things you can't do, you know, so, but they did a really good job of kinda looking all that over and, and then, you know, the, the next step is to put in place that document so that if somebody comes and says, hey, can you help us with this? It's like, here you go, fill this out, it'll come into city hall, we'll collect them and then when the tourist board meets, we'll let them look them over and then they can decide, you know, is this something that we wanna support and...
And then we can help do some promoting or marketing
Yeah.
off of that information
Right, yep.
if it's out of our
Yep.
area.
Yep.
Yeah, that's great.
So, and also I think of, like, all the sporting teams that come here, so they can apply for marketing tourism if they want to too, cause they're bringing in people.
They can, but there is a good discussion about that because if there's a tournament, then they've identified, for the most part, who the people are that are gonna be coming in. So, it's like, I don't know that they would ask for help marketing their event because it's a tournament and they're reaching out to teams.
Because they've already got...
They've already, it's like a built-in clientele that's gonna be coming, you know? There are some tournaments that maybe some teams don't know about, that you could probably throw some information out there. Like, I know this year they had, what was it, a woodback tournament for young kids? Which is very, very unique, you know, that, cause little kids don't play with wood bats, they play with aluminum bats. But, but, but it was very popular, they had a lot of teams that showed up for that tournament.
But I'm thinking, like, could these dollars, okay, so ha- have something tourism to promote? And again, because they're already from the outside and they're staying in our hotels, could there be something to promote the businesses here that they may utilize if they're already here?
Once they're here, probably not.
And wh- what would that fall under, why would that not? Because they're already here, so we're not gonna promote the businesses that are here?
Well, I think that's where your local chamber comes in to play, is to support, you know, the local businesses and, and make sure that people know, you know, cause when, when visitors are coming to our community, I would think, you know, one of the places that's a resource for them is the local chamber. They can go to and find out where, you know, some of the businesses are.
But why, then I'm just thinking, can those tourism dollars, and I, I get, because we have a lot of them, I mean, there's a lot of tourism dollars. So, I'm just thinking, can it somehow promote the chamber, it's something at the chamber that would prom- promote tourism here in the town when they're there?
So, there's... The overall lines from previous meetings though is the heads of beds.
Yeah.
You know, we're trying to draw outside in to our community that's coming in to spend it, you know, from an outside instead of promoting just everything in general of our, so it, it should be something that's drawing people in to the area from out of our areas with the tourism dollars should be spent on, I believe.
Well, it's promoting your, I mean, they're outlining here what we can do.
Yep, and they're working on it and I'd say, you know, don't let them do it, but just...
That's why I'm asking, is there something in there, I mean, it just, really, there, it's pretty broad what the local lodging taxes can use.
Where it can get kinda muddy, Kim, is, uh, if you start promoting individual businesses.
But that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the tourism dollars, setting up something to give, so if somebody wants to, hey, where is... And I don't, and then again, this maybe, this could, you know, if it's out of line, but so, something that, not for the, but for every business in the area, you know, not just to say, hey, go here, but, you know, and not a brochure because those get outdated really quickly.
You're, you're saying to spend the money on something that would, uh, make them aware of the businesses?
Yeah, thank you.
Not, not really promote them, but
No, just make them aware of what's here.
make them aware of what's available in the town, is that what you're, that's what I'm knowing from you.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
I think that's more of a chamber function, I guess, is the way I see that, but...
But then, okay. Somebody's gotta do, I'm just thinking, why can't the tourism dollars fund give money to the chamber to do that?
But that's...
And then again, then it's, I just, they don't wanna...
Well, then we gotta, then you, then you gotta wonder how that money's being spent.
Right.
Well, you would be able to know.
Once you give it to them, then how they, what are they gonna do with it, so?
Yeah, if there's no direct...
It's kind of a...
Look into the chamber of five tourism dollars, right?
Yeah, you know, uh, just a couple of quick things, but, so you had mentioned that we have all this money, um, since this was implemented through last year, we've taken in about six hundred thousand dollars, we've spent over four hundred thousand dollars. So, we've spent a lot of money, about a quarter of a million of that went to the chamber to do tourism. And then what happened was, it stopped, they stopped doing tourism.
I, yeah, I remember.
And, and so, as, as, as I understand it, they don't want any part of this, but one of the follow-on discussions that we had at the last meeting was, let's take a look at creating a position, a part-time position, that's a tourism position and figure out where we would locate it, and then that person would coordinate with businesses, coordinate with events, coordinate with the marketing people, uh, would coordinate these requests coming in, and so that's one of the things that we are gonna look at. You know, because we, we could do that, you know, create that position, and that's kinda the way it was before, but because it was in the, and I think everybody agrees that the place for it is not in the chamber. The place for it is, you know, maybe in city hall or some, somewhere else, you know, but this person would be designated to do that. And then they could look at things like providing information to visitors that are coming in, you know, so that they know and understand what, what, what all we have in Morrison. And I think that's probably a good idea moving forward.
Yeah, and that position too would also assist in, uh, recording meeting minutes
Yep.
and things like that.
Coordinate the meetings of the tourism board and...
A fair amount of money that, you know, passes through that, that, that board, so it's kind of important that we have some record.
Absolutely, and I, I'm not trying to, these are great guidelines, I'm just trying to maybe expand them and figure out a, a way that can be used, because like I said, it's very general, so we can create, as long as it's used for, for, um, you know, what is it? Advertising.
Promotion and marketing.
Promotion of your city.
Yep.
That's all it says we have to do, so I think sometimes we can get, be creative and I know the people on there working on this probably are very creative, so not to just...
But that's, but that's where the attorney general's office
Yeah.
was very specific about not getting creative. And that's, I think that's what the understanding was, is you gotta be very careful that you don't expand it out beyond, it's actually a very simple thing, tourism is tourism, you know, promotion and marketing is promotion and marketing. And, and, uh, but, but the one thing you can do is you can fund a convention and visitors bureau, a tourism bureau, and that's, that's an easy thing to do, and then that person can, can work, work the magic when it comes to doing all this stuff.
Yeah, and I think, Kim, the biggest thing and why we, why we're going down this direction with hiring this part-time coordinator is, um, the, the relationship between tourism and chamber had, has broken down over the years and we're trying to get that back. You know, just to facilitate that, that link between the two organizations, cause it's critical. They, they, they do work hand in hand, so I hope that helps, but that's the end of the direction we're going in.
And I agree with you, yeah, to spend that money that's there to promote it, uh, to promote our tourism or in our area, our community, to, to spend what we've, we've taken from people that, on a tax, to use it, you know, it's, to put it to work for our community.
So, if this isn't quite finished, are we gonna
Right.
approval policy? Oh, it, yeah, so we're just approving this and then it goes back?
Yeah, then it'll go back and then they'll develop a form and
Yeah.
and, uh...
Esther was, Esther Jordan is the one that's working on this and she's gonna have somebody assist her and look at some of the legalities of putting this form and so forth together, so that's kinda where we're at with it. She'll come back with the final draft at our next tourism meeting.
Okay, so do we, do we do a, um, pass a motion as it is and then expect?
That's what, that's what we're looking for, just as it is and then we'll bring it back.
Yeah, I like, I, I really do like the concept, and this, you, you, you think about it, when you, when you read through this, um, this is so far on the front end, planning stage of whatever is gonna happen. I mean, you, you know, you, you can't plan something for two months from now and, hey, let's go see. It's just not, it's not set up for that.
Right.
You know, so it's kinda interesting, but a coordinator of some sort would
Help a lot.
Would help a lot for that, yeah? I make a motion that we, uh, approve the policy, um, for allowing requests for marketing assistance from the lodging tax funds and expect to see the final product at some point.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Ordinances and resolutions, we have a resolution authorizes execution of MinDOT grant agreement for airport improvement excluding land acquisition.
Yeah, so this is the grant for that automated weather station that, uh, uh, we talked about updating as long as the airport was being worked on and, and, uh, they're looking for a resolution from the city, uh, accepting that grant that they are offering. And so then the local share of that is, uh, thirteen thousand four hundred and forty, we talked about taking that out of the ARPA funds, um, which there's funding available still in there for, for that and, and then just one side note, um, uh, the runway project is gonna be done and the new runway will open up on September eighth.
Wow.
So, I'm talking with the, uh, although somebody opened it up early, if you, if you saw in my newsletter, somebody landed and, yeah, pretty much scared all the workers out there because they had no idea a plane was gonna come in and land.
That could've been bad, really.
But, uh, so we're looking at maybe doing a, like, some kind of a ceremony out there to open that up. But this is for the weather station.
I will move a resolution authorizing execution of a Minnesota DOT grant agreement for the airport improvement excluding land acquisition for the weather, uh, information unit to be installed.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Delton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Delton?
Yes.
Yes. City manager's report.
Yeah, um, well, I mentioned the, the airport opening up on September eighth, that wasn't on my report, but, um, just, we're working on budgets, uh, we're seeing a little bit of COVID going around, uh, Aaron is not here because he's sitting at home. Um, so, we're kinda keeping an eye on that and, uh, um, we had a good meeting to talk about performance evaluation again, so I think we're getting really close to having a form, uh, that, that'll be available and then once that's done, then we'll figure out a schedule and, and, and we had a really good discussion about some other types of interaction, uh, and communication, uh, with department heads and, and, um, you know, maybe some additional times that we could get together just to talk about, you know, some of the things that are going on, projects and stuff like that, so, so that's going really well and, uh, we should be done shortly with that. Um, I mentioned that I went out and was looking at some of the projects, the projects going really well right now. East Sixth Street, they're, they're putting in the line there and actually, they have two crews now that are working. So, if you go out to Iowa Avenue, there's a crew putting in the sewer line out there and they have a crew down here on Sixth that's putting in, uh, the utility, so they're moving along very nicely on that. And Columbia Avenue's pretty much done, uh, with the underground work and, and then, you know, once the, once I think Sixth Street gets closer, then they'll probably move in to do the curb and gutter and sidewalks and things like that. Um, I'll answer any other questions you might have on, on the...
Lane, I was just trying to envision the third, where you talked about the safe routes to school thing on that third point you made, where you wanna put a, connect a sidewalk, walk to the white, bu- walk bike path rather, uh, it's on the east side of the school, so is it gonna run just from that very, it'd be the southeast corner and then just from there down to the park or? I'm trying to envision how that is.
So, come up from Green River, up by where the tennis courts are and then unwind through the back of the school and go all the way across to the back of the school.
Okay.
And actually, we applied for that grant before and we were not successful in that grant, but you, the idea is that, and, you know, the biggest problem is, everybody wants to walk where they wanna walk. There, it's really hard to force people where to go, but, um, all the kids coming from that neighborhood below the high school, um, have to kinda filter in up there anyway. Uh, if they come up Columbia Avenue, now they're walking across all the driveways and that's a danger. Uh, but, but, you know, the biggest part about this whole thing is, uh, we went out and surveyed the whole town. We had people everywhere, uh, under this planning process, just to watch where people came from and where they went. So, like, in my neighborhood, they, Jeff knows this, they just wander through the yards and cross wherever they wanna cross and you're not gonna force them to go to any one spot, they might come by the church, they might come by the high-rise, they might come, you know, they come through my yard, uh, and stuff like that, and so that, it's not, it's not really a good, good place to try to figure out where to focus them, but behind the school is probably a good, good place to go, and then I know they just recently were doing some changes behind the elementary school. You know, they had a bunch of basketball hoops, we talked about it in the park board, a bunch of basketball hoops and stuff like that, yeah, that's where all the buses come, and then the, there's nothing to stop the basketball when they shoot it from going down the one hill and the next, and, and it's just, it, it, it's actually kinda funny if you ever watched somebody do that, but, um, but, you know, the, the, the bigger ones are probably the crossing signal, signals, the markings on the road, the signs, things like that, like at, um, South Street and Columbia Avenue and then over by, uh, Saint Mary's. Uh, we know there's a, if you ever watched people dropping off at Saint Mary's, it's really interesting. But just some simple signs and, and lights and crossing, uh, paint and stuff like that might help though.
Is that a used access, the rear of the school, if there's a sidewalk coming across the back of the school with their safe entrances to schools, I guess no children, it's sort of unknown to me, but is that a, a used entrance on the school buildings, the back entrance, if there's sidewalks coming by the back?
Yeah, cause that's where the buses drop off in the back, I think.
Yeah.
You know, the parents drop off in the front and transit and everybody else, but the buses go around to the back and drop off and the kids come in the back.
Yeah, it'd kinda be right where the cafeteria is, there's, there is a, on the south side there.
But that's part of, I mean, this is, the, the school sat down with us, Saint Mary's sat down with us and this is one of the things that they're in, very interested in, you know, and, and the next step is to try to figure out what that would look like in a project and then the, later this fall, probably in October, they'll start looking at grant applications, I think, for that.
Good, any other questions or comments on the city manager report? Any other business to bring before the council?
Uh, Mayor, I do have just a few quick things. Um, I received a call, or actually a, a representative from the K C's, the Knights of Columbus from the Catholic Church approached me. Uh, and what they're looking for is, um, they wanna put directional signs to the Catholic Church somewhere on Main Street. You know, you've seen them, you know, I think in different towns where you go to like the church, two blocks this way with an arrow. And they were wondering what the ordinance is and where they could possibly put, uh, a directional sign somewhere on Main Street. Uh, and they wanted to know if they could put them on poles or just what the rate, you know, what the ordinance actually gives.
It's a state highway.
I was gonna say it's a state highway.
It's not, it's not, I, I think the state controls where the signs would go.
If you were gonna put it on Main Street, yeah, I would think you would have to.
And that's probably what it would be.
But, but it's not, I mean, I'm trying to think, cause there is a sign like over on West Fifth Street, which is Highway twenty-eight that is pointing to one of the churches, you know, so it's possible, but, um, there's a sign guy at MinDOT that we could reach out to and try to, try to find out, you know, what, what the, uh, rules are for that.
Would you be able to email me that, that contact person and then I'll just pass them on to them? Sign guy or whoever he is?
Yeah.
Sign guy, okay. That's state, alright, thank you, that's one thing, um. I see, uh, the zoning, I, we changed the zoning on E Seventh Street, it was highway business, and I'm trying to remember what we zoned it to. It was, is it residential, multifamily dwelling now on Seventh Street? Kind of that road that goes out from, you know, along past Chandler and...
Uh, it's neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood.
Is what it's called. So, neighborhood commercial has both business and residential in it.
Okay.
So, the businesses that are there grandfathered in to continue, but just expanding is not allowed?
Neighborhood commercial.
Uh, yeah, well, you can't, you, you can expand on your own property, you can't buy more property and expand on that. They changed a couple of the rules with the expansion.
Yeah, I, cause I see Astmas Electric bought the old Salvation Army building.
Who did?
Astmas Electric.
Yep.
But that's their business.
That's their business, yeah.
So, they can, cause of the zoning.
As long as they don't alter the existing structure, they're fine, cause that, does that fit it? Is that a permitted use, I guess, in a neighborhood commercial?
Yeah, yeah, because it's, it's a business, I mean, it, you know, it's electrical business, so I'm trying to think of, um, you know, where Kiefer Electric was.
Right.
Um, other, uh, what was the other one that we're looking at? I'd have to go back and look.
No, that's not, it's not a big deal, I, I mean, it is, but I just was kinda curious, um, as to how that was, I was just trying to remember more than anything, I, I remember we changed it, but I couldn't remember what we changed it to. No, I think it's a good fit for that, for them, I'm glad they got that building, at least someone's using it, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
The last thing I had was, um, I had a call from a constituent about the Columbia Avenue project. He said that he talked to one of the engineers, and I'm assuming it was Jeff, and I'm not sure if it was, but he said it was an engineer that said that we're considering putting parking on both sides of that street. Now, I don't remember that discussion at all.
No.
And, uh, cause isn't that a snow emergency route that leads up to the hospital? I can't imagine we'd have parking on both sides of the street.
Yeah, no, I don't know. Yeah, no, I don't know.
Cause there is one side road now, right? On Columbia or not? Or is it?
Yep, it's one side.
One side. He said he heard that the engineer, this is somebody telling me, said they heard they were gonna go to parking on both sides.
Nope.
I didn't think so, but I thought, I told him I'd ask, so. Okay, it's good to know. That's all I had, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other business to come before the council? Meeting adjourned.